President.
Korea.
Present.
Farquhar.
Present.
Oldesty. Thomas. Foreign Attendants.
Can you have approval of the previous minutes? Motion.
Second.
Next, we have agenda review. Ordinance number nine, second reading amended chapters eighty-four alcoholic beverages and three hundred land management of the city code to regulate liquor stores and regulated sales of alcoholic beverages within the city. This is second reading. Public hearing will be held during regular session.
Any questions?
Ordinance number ten, adopting a redevelopment plan for the properties identified as block three eighty-two lots one fourteen on the official tax map of Pleasantville pursuant to the local redevelopment housing law of NJS A forty-eight colon twelve dash one. Please note that this has been moved to September sixteenth for second reading. It will go before the planning board at their scheduled meeting for September tenth. Any recommendations set forth from the planning board will be presented before you, before you make your second reading for adoption. Okay?
Next, it's ordinance eleven.
Ordinance number eleven, fixing the sideways of officials and employees of the city.
Questions? Sheena?
Resolution one hundred thirty-six, granting approval of indoor flea market on September twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth from nine AM to two PM at the recreation center.
Questions?
Resolution one hundred thirty-seven, providing for budget disbursement into the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Questions? Sheena?
Resolution one hundred thirty-eight, authorizing the city to enter to a memorandum of understanding with Stockton University for the homework completion program.
Any questions? Sheena?
Resolution one hundred thirty-nine, authorizing participation in the grant application submission for spot Atlanta fly, Latin fly program.
Any questions? Sheena?
Resolution one hundred forty, authorizing execution of the riders of Atlantic County Utility Authority for their shared services agreement.
Any questions? Council, can we have an explanation on that?
Sure, sure, I can explain. What happens with the Atlantic County Utility Authority is that the school district was paying the city and then the city was paying the ACUA and this had to do something that the school district could not engage into that contract directly with the ACUA. So basically, this is a net. This does not affect or lower the cost for the city. It's just removing that added portion that the school district was paying to the city and we were forwarding it to the ACUA.
So what you're saying now is that the school system's going to be paying directly?
Yeah, they're, yes, they got their own vendor, their own.
Good. Okay, next, builders. Just look.
Good evening. Uh, gross bill that we paid today at council meeting. This council meeting, uh, not a lot of them. The biggest one is obviously down the bottom when we pay our medical bills for, um, at least active and retired for the month of, hmm, July, February, August. Building bigger, just a couple minor ones. Uh, you see, right in the middle where it says the tactical public safety, this was a, actually, two checks there. One was voided. Uh, the other one was written, uh, had to do with radios and stuff and do one of the three parts.
What page are you on this?
Uh, sorry, I'm page one for checks that we have written between council meeting and last council meeting. Check register by check data. Uh, there's one there, you see there in the middle, some general capital, sixty-five hundred hours to New Jersey dot. Uh, this is for the roadwork being done on the Black Forest Pike. Uh, and there's an escrow camp that they require from us, uh, because they'll be closing part of the road at certain times during the day and during the night particularly. And the, the escrow camp, if it doesn't, if stayed sixty-five hundred hours, you will get the balance back to us. Now looking for checks to be approved in this, to be, to be approved. Most of these are a minor, minor one things we deal with on a day-to-day basis. I think the first one we want to take a look at, it's unusual, is will be, uh, on page three. I think if you get out there at the fire department, you've seen a nice new Tahoe out there, uh, that, uh, that's sitting over there. That's just the payment for Tahoe. There will be another bill coming in next month for the upsetting of it for the radios and the bars and light bars and everything else. And there's also, I think, a small one for, um, the lettering of the truck?
Yeah.
Lettering of the Tahoe. Further down on there, you'll come to game time. We are, uh, replacing numerous parts and bits and pieces for playgrounds, swings, some of the slides and other things that were, have been, we'll say, excess wear and tear on them. We're replacing, replacing those.
This is, can I ask you a question? What playground are they going to start on first? Because it's been a lot of questions.
Uh, I think there's probably, I think both for playgrounds.
They can start off?
Yeah, I think there's, um, I know we're looking for some big stuff down in these avenues, so I think these avenues are not included, but I think somebody else, or smaller, uh, playground are included in this. Go to page four. You'll see Powerline Industries. This is for twenty-nine thousand dollars. This is a, uh, system purchased by NPP. Uh, we know we've had over the years a number of problems with the sidewalk regarding gum and trash and smeared over sidewalks. So this power, this power washing system will take care of that. Uh, DEP will run the system and clean up, probably on a regular scheduled basis. So we don't have a lot of problems with sidewalk. They know Captain Korea, as I talked before, about people throwing gum on the sidewalk and people stepping on it. This will help alleviate that problem. Couple down is Lafayette Utility. Most of these are old. They just didn't send them either bills. Uh, but the first one for Ashton Avenue and the third one for, uh, East, uh, East Oak had to do with, uh, storm drains and cleaning out some of the storm drains. Uh, the one on fifteen, that was a semi-major problem with the, the storage system breakdown by the, over in the corner by the new building.
On Main Street, Washington?
Pardon me?
Main Street, Washington Avenue, right there?
No, Main Street and Milan.
Okay, Milan, yeah, okay.
Milan. Um, we go to page five. You see the nuclear service right in the middle. That is, uh, a partial payment for a food program that, uh, the city runs during summer for all locations. Um, this will, we've already been paid this money from the, the state Department of Agriculture. We'll, we'll pay it out. And there's probably another thirty thousand dollars that's due. We will pay that during the month of September, and, and end of September.
And that's all coming from the state?
All coming from the State Department of Agriculture. Go to page six. You see South State. There's two items there. One is the, uh, the C eighty-six thousand dollars with the partial payment for Italian Park Avenue. And the fifty-one thousand dollars is the final payment for Amy's Boulevard. I know we've had Amy's Boulevard up and running for a number of years. Um, this is the final payment checklist. The original started back in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. This is the final payment. And next month, you will see a change order reducing the regional contract by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Original contract, one point seven something. It came in at one point six something.
That's good. So who, who do we have that goes out and looks at it to make sure?
Our engineers.
Okay.
Our engineers do check the checklist and they'll go out and repair it to contractor and they'll be agreed with you.
Alright, because I know it was some depth in there.
Time, we will refund the, the retainage and the final payment. But we also have a maintenance bond of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If anything happened for the next couple of years, we'll, we'll hit that. Other than that, there are rest of bills or just normal operating bills that we handle. Um, any questions?
Any questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I hope discussion. Anybody have anything that they'd like to talk about? Motion to close, motion to open discussion.
Motion.
Second. This motion to close work session. Motion to close. All the papers? Alright, alright. Okay. This meeting has duly advertised in the city newspaper according to Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call? Alabama. Excuse me, can we just have a moment, silence for Darswood, Wendy, Close Run Bars and Good Person in the Community, so. Okay, roll call?
Davenport.
Present.
Habler. Corona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Farquhar.
Present.
Oldesty. Thomas. Foreign Attendants.
Okay, motion to dispense of the meetings of previous minutes?
Motion to second.
All in favor?
Not our.
Okay, Mayor, do you have any conditions or proclamations?
Nothing.
Nice for public portion. Do you have any more? Well, can we have rent free?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just came before you guys to share my appreciation and a plan for a city center project. As you know, Ideal Institute of Technology now have a home and we are officially a college town. At the Pleasantville, we had twenty-two students enroll in Sentinel University's teaching site. That's at the one thousand Washington Avenue. And, uh, we are working towards announcing one thousand dollar scholarship fund for the South Jersey residents to either taking a trade program or undergrad or graduate program in partnership with Sentinel University. So we will have, uh, always in my heart, Pleasantville first, uh, for all of our program. So this holiday, we're coming up with the program for the scholarship for all those students who were told that college is not for everybody. You're not good for college. Whether they choose college or trade, they will have an opportunity to earn and learn at the same time at ideal in Pleasantville. And, uh, I have a rendering of what we are doing at the city center project. So few things like Mayor and I talked on clarification on it. When we did the expansion of Public Health and purchased the press building, we purchased as a real estate company. So Ideal Institute of Technology is a nonprofit organization, but we are still paying property taxes to the city. And that was my commitment to the city that we won't do anything that decrease the revenue to the city. And that's why, uh, we did it that way and Ideal is a tenant to the building, even though we, my wife and I be on the building. Uh, when, uh, we talk about South Jersey's economy and hospitality industry, we don't have any vocational hospitality management program in South Jersey. Our esteemed higher ed education, Atlantic Cape Community College and Stockton University do offer the bachelor's in hospitality management, but nothing that does provide a training as a trade. Uh, and, uh, we are building whole city block right in a Pleasantville with micro brewery, food outlet, cloud kitchen, banquet hall, uh, eighteen-room hotel, rooftop restaurant, uh, right next to the city hall in a city center project. And we appreciate city support in securing demolition fund from the UEZ as well. So I came here to share that we are ready with the rendering plan and everything. And we will come before the council to request a pilot for the, uh, development project. Because it's a twelve million dollar, uh, complete commercial project, uh, and in the heart of the city. So we will need as much help as we can get from you guys. But we have secured the funding also, uh, for the, uh, our development project. So I just have a brochure I wanted to share with everybody and I want to appreciate it.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes.
Because me and you had a conversation at the, uh, the Coalition's event the other day. Could you explain that a little bit more when you talked about the college up in, that you're a part of up here also?
Yes, so we partnered with the Sentinel University. They are hundred and fifty-plus year old Methodist church-run private university. And, uh, we have their teaching site and they are already applied to be a brand campus officially. We offer all the undergrad program and they also collaborate with a very well-known high school called the Patrick School. They are, they put thirty-plus basketball players in, uh, their NBA. Their graduates are playing in a major like a, I don't know much about basketball, but their players, graduates are, uh, playing in NBA. And they will have a home and their basketball academy in Pleasantville. And I'm exploring a possibility of the community benefit agreement that we can provide qualified Pleasantville youth to get into the no-cost Patrick School Basketball Academy as well. So that's what I was sharing, that you know more about basketball, so I said, let me take your brain on how to do it.
They're here for St. Patrick's.
Yeah, so that's, that's a very big, uh, well-known basketball school and they will have, uh, academy in Pleasantville.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, you're right. Feel Mr. Puike has some?
Yes.
Yes, uh, uh, when you mentioned Bankway Hall, it touched me because when we are hosting things here, I live in Pleasantville. I want to host events that would just remain Pleasantville, but then I have to include Atlantic City because of space and quality. What rating would that hall be at Pleasantville?
So the hall, it's in here. It's a fifteen thousand square foot with a twenty-two foot height. So it's a one of a kind in a South Jersey. So we're also seeking, uh, parking lot that county owns to leasing or buy it. Also, that's a hundred plus parking there. That's sufficiently allowed. We will add additional forty-eight parking to the, the property as well.
Like a parking on the other side?
Yeah, mhm. And I reached out to the property owner, the new property owner right across. That's, it's like, uh, not in a good condition. I reached out to them if they wanted to, uh, sell it, ground it and make extra parking. So we're, we're working towards that. If that happens, then it's going to be a parking and bridge right across if the, the, the construction permits and everything happens. Uh, but we're working towards that. So that banquet hall, uh, will be able, it's a commercial banquet hall with, uh, anyone who want to use it to do the convention, conference. So it's going to be mini convention center in Pleasantville, uh, not as big as, uh, what we have in Atlantic City, but then it's a traffic, it's a challenges. So we wanted to have, uh, Pleasantville to be that. Uh, only other option is going to be, it's a carriage housing Galloway, technically speaking. Uh, there is no other options like that size and we will have it in Pleasantville, but whole South Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But then, you're taking all of our old buildings with character and making them a parking lot.
We need that in a main street.
That's alright.
No.
Alright, Mr. Pettis? Good evening, Councilperson. Mayor? I was here last, last Tuesday, and I commented my concern about, uh, the proposed development project for the, like, Brighton and New Room, et cetera. And, uh, I still have some concern about five-year tax abatement. I implore council to consider what that translates into in dollars. Given the proposed project, and, and I was a little disappointed that representatives of the project couldn't even answer y'all's questions about the project. I mean, somebody comes in, propose something, couldn't, and you ask them question, they can't answer the question. Well, no, he can say it, I can say it. He can. So that's, that's a problem there that, that I would implore you to look at. I know they've been trying to develop that site for thirty, forty years. It's nothing new, but my concern is, you know, it's taxes. We're, we're the highest taxed community in, in the county with, with the lowest income. And we just can't continue to be giving up proposed taxes. We, we're closing by water and land. We have no more territory that we can develop. And we need to focus on people who want to come to this project I just heard about. Sounds interesting, but already he wants a pilot, uh, you know? Paying in lieu of taxes, but that means that we don't want to pay the re, the assessed taxes. We want to pay less. Back to leaving to long-range problems and pilots, I think, have to be ruled by the state, uh, call.
That's correct.
And, uh, I would certainly implore this council, as much as, uh, I have a property development. The impact it's going to have on the school district, the impact it's going to have on the rec center, you ain't going to be in the, the rest of the town ain't own their rec center once that development is done. I'm telling you now, this won't belong to the developer. May not, actually, I mean, it may not legally, but in actuality, as the rec center's going to belong to them and nobody else in the town's going to be able to use it unless we expand that. So there ought to be some conditions. I really would implore you guys, please, tell the public how much the, the tax abatement, if approved, is going to cost the taxpayers. That, that's, that's my serious concern and I suggested that you do some studies and some, some analysis relative thereto. Uh, tax assessment maybe give you a perspective as to how long it's going to take to build a project versus, versus what, you know? I don't think taxes have gone up less than two hundred dollars on my property in the last twenty years. So where are we headed in the future? When we, when we approve these projects and, and also with, I'm on the planning board, talked to them too about these variances they're giving for, for churches and, and dollar schools. Well, I just want to say something to you because in the, in the past, we've been giving out twenty-year payments and, and things of that nature. So, you know, we've gotten hold of that and now we've got it down to five. I take a lot of these orders. I mean, and I appreciate it. But no, 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 I just want to say this to you also, because I'm, I'm the chair of planning and development. So what I'm going to do, because you brought up an interesting question, I'm going to bring that up and we're going to have a conversation on that, what the cost of it is and then I'll get back to you. Because I just talked to our new BA. We're going to have a P and D meeting hopefully early month, early next week. And I'll be, I'll be in touch with you right after we finish. Thank you very much. Okay? I think it's important that we do that. And I appreciate your time and I, I'm not trying to be a pest. No, that was a good question. Thank you, thank you. Alright, Mr. Corey Hicks?
Hello, good evening. Good evening, sir, council. Uh, I'm here on behalf of very questioning subject. So my question for you is, is this for me and my constituents? This is about the rent control. Um, I'm here on behalf of thousands, I'm prepared to be here about a subject, um, that are very worried. They're being forced to sign, uh, lease agreements, scheduled for the first of this month, the night before and a little bit after. And they're worried and I cannot leave here today without going back to them and giving them a definitive answer of what is going on with the situation. So I was hoping to find out what the answer would be today from one of you guys.
So we plan to have the, uh, second reading at next, next meeting?
Is there anything more definitive than that? Because every time you come here, it's the same thing.
Well, second, once the second reading is, then it will go into effect.
So what is, what can I actually go back and give them or, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not even a member of the council or anything from our board. I don't even know who that person even is. That's me. Um, okay, alright, so, uh, like, we have no idea what's going on with that and everybody in the whole city is very concerned. They're, I think, out and they're about to lose their places and where they're going to live and, and I, I can't go back to them and be like, oh, well, next meeting, the next meeting.
No, I, I wasn't saying next meeting, next meeting. I was saying, yeah, next meeting, the second reading of the ordinance, which presumably by law, the ordinance can't go into effect until there's a second.
Okay, so when is it going to be, and set into law officially?
If it's approved, it would go after the second reading.
So when, what can you give me?
Who's on next?
Sixteenth, so it's coming sixteen.
September the sixteenth. So is it going to be signed today then? Because I don't want to go back there and be like, you know, I need to give them, like, some reassurance. Because they're freaking out. They don't have the luxury of waiting another two weeks. Because there, there's landlords that are trying to take advantage of them and get them to sign leases before this law goes into effect, because they're going to be legally obligated to a boss.
Hey, Mr. Hicks, I'll tell you what I'm going to do. As I know where you're at and you can talk after we leave here tonight.
Okay.
But I'll come over and sit with whoever we talk about tomorrow that would get some of that pressure off of you and give them some type of insight on what's going on.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so I'll see you, we'll talk.
Alright, thank you. Have a good, keep moving, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Good evening. Um, I'm here, I'm going to say, I did everything that Mr. Bettis just did. I didn't want to ask, I'm going to say another thing. Um, it was said to me several times, over and over again, this is how business is done. This is how business is done. And they judge everything on AARP Township, Galloway, Norfield and all the others that surround their neighborhoods. But I beiterate to them till I talk to why does Pleasantville have to do business like that? Like Mr. Bettis said, where the only property left, the water, with the land view, you got all the skating, just take advantage of that stuff. You want to come and do business, pay your taxes straight off the bat. That's it for that. But I'm here for, um, three eighteen West Park Avenue, the project over here on Park Avenue. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Davenport, Ms. Thomas and Ms. Ward for your help in getting me the apron that I needed to get access to the property. Uh, the other thing about the property is that they had to take a pickup tree or brush and stuff. They pushed it back. I don't know what they plans on doing because they would have, they didn't have dump trucks or whatever, but I hope that that's not how they're going to leave that. That's alright. Alright, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Motion to close work session.
Motion.
A public hearing, sorry.
We got the public portion.
Motion to close public portion.
Motion. Second.
Our first on agenda is ordinance number nine. Okay, second here, uh, public hearing is required, so please be ready.
Roll call? That's our motion first. Motion?
Second.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, so we have ordinance number nine, public hearing is required, amended chapters eighty-four. Uh, the alcoholic beverages and three hundred land management of the city code to regulate liquor stores and regulated sales of alcoholic beverages within the city. Public hearing.
Anyone from public want to come up and speak? Alright, motion to close public hearing.
Motion.
Second. Roll call?
Davenport.
Yes.
Abalero. Not here. Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Order is adopted. Order number ten is being moved to September sixteen, but is adopting a redevelopment plan for the properties identified as block three eighty-two, lots one and fourteen of the official tax map for the city pursuant to the local development and housing law and JSA forty-eight, calling twelve dash one.
Were we pulling this off the agenda yet?
Yes, we just put it for the market. Next is order number eleven, first reading fixing salaries of officials and employees of the city.
Motion.
No, hang on.
Who made the motion?
Me. Big one.
Second.
Roll call.
Davenport.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Bogusby. I'm sorry. Order is moved to first, second reading scheduled for September sixteen. Next is resolution one hundred thirty-six, grant approval of indoor flea market for September twenty-eighth from nine to AM to two PM in the recreation center.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Davenport.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred thirty-seven providing for a budget insertion into the twenty twenty-four budget.
Motion, second. Roll call.
Davenport.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred thirty-eight authorizing the city to enter into an O U, a memorandum of understanding for Stockton University for the homework completion program.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Davenport.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred thirty-nine authorized participation and grant application submitted for the spotted lancher blind program.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Davenport.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred forty authorizing the execution of a rider with Atlantic County Utilities Authority for the shared services agreement.
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Davenport.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Any approval for the buildings?
Motion. Kamona.
Second.
Second, Jim. Roll call.
Davenport.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is comments from Mayor Council.
Anybody? Mayor?
Thank you all for coming out. I wanted to ask Council, I'm sorry for sending your accent. But on Tuesday, there was a bookbag giveaway in Pleasantville. First of all, we intend to do one on Thursday and a few of you were there. And that, that was very, you know, well-attended, different organizations are there and everybody sending out bookbags. But prior to that, on Tuesday, there was a bookbag giveaway at Leeds Avenue. Excuse me, which I don't know if it was renting Leeds Avenue before for anything. But the person that, I have a flyer and the person that we had to respond to wasn't the one that rented the park. And I just want to know, you know, what are we doing with this? This is something that we, that should have been recommended to go to the Coalition's event because it was all the same and it was different organizations there that was giving out the bookbags. So that this one was Tuesday, you can't tell anyone you didn't give it. Be grateful that they're coming to give it to our Pleasantville students. But it just doesn't seem right that whoever applied for it wasn't the ones that were using it.
Can you be a little bit more specific, cause?
Well, you were there, right?
Yeah, I can, I, yes, yes. I didn't know about, you know, the application of whether it was necessary.
I, I really didn't want to, I pulled it out, but I didn't really, really want to read it. I thought we were going into executive session, but I went up to wait till next week when we're all this one party, one party, anybody to do it. So we can have another, we can do whatever we're going to do to all be together to talk about this. But just the way that it was done wasn't right and that's all I want to say. The way that we rent our, you know, rent our parks is going to be straight up and for the residents in the way that we planned to be.
Can I ask a question? They didn't go through the rec center, that's what they were supposed to go through.
The rec center got the application. But the, on this flyer, the person that you responded to was completely different. Completely different than anybody else on the application, insurance or anything.
Yeah, I just want to agree with the mayor that it's a very important issue, but I think it's better we discuss it outside of this environment with detail into it.
And I don't, I'm gingerly trying not to.
Yeah, I, I agree with you in that.
I thought we were going to be at the executive session.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Well, if you want, we can, do you want to talk about it now?
Well, no, no.
No. Because, reason why I'm saying is because I was there and I know it was well-attended. I watched a lot of kids get bookbags and, you know, bikes and things of that nature. So I don't know what.
There where I agree with most of them.
You know what I'm saying?
Something we all know, right?
Exactly, but what I'm saying, exactly. From the visual, it, uh, it served the community pretty well. I think the kids were happy and, you know? I don't know. But I understand what you're saying, Mayor. Okay. Anything else? No? I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Solomon, that, all that portion, everything has been closed out, so, you know.
But we did have a good commi, uh, excuse me.
Yes, go ahead.
So we did have a good community walk on Thursday and bookbag giveaway. And the vendors really supported the area, I mean, the event. And I thank everybody that came out and Public Works, Police, Fire, everyone else that contributed. Thank you, have a good evening.
I just want to say, um, I think on Thursday, it was very nice. It turned out really well. The portion that I did on the basketball court, the kids were happy. It just turned out really well. So we just look forward to having more of those things in the future. And that's all. I guess we have a motion close. For John?
Fireworks.
Oh, yeah.
We have fireworks, what, this Friday?
Yes.
This Friday?
The sixth.
Which is the last one.
The sixth.
Thank God.
Right?
Thank God.
And it's so funny, I, I was out there and I was glad to see the fire department, but I really didn't know we had that many trucks, man. That was amazing to see that, that line up there, you know, that really looked good. So with that being said, ready to jump?
Yeah.
Alright, motion?
Motion.
Second.